Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lompoke City Council meeting. And, 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 I know we have a roll call, but it's not on here, so we'll have a roll call, because we always have a roll call. And we always have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilmember Martin? Present. Councilmember Costa? Present. Councilmember Lingle?
Here.
Mayor Protem Starbuck?
Present.
Mayor John Lynn?
Here.
Okay, now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to make a slight agenda switch here. We're going to make item number two, number one, and item number one, number two, because the Beautification Commission is here with us this evening, and item number two deals with something they might have to deal with. Let me give just a little bit of background. Back about a month and a half ago, I was contacted by the property owners who said they would like to have the sculpture that is in the, on their property at the corner of Ocean and H removed, and that the city was involved in the placing of it there. And then I contacted Kate Griffith, who was our Economic Development Coordinator at the time, and she knew the details of it and was able to contact the artist, who, I think it's a loan, not a donation, and he allowed us how, he was happy to have it relocated anywhere else in the city and continue to be a loan to us, and sent an email to that effect. And so now, we're at the point of trying to decide how to go forward with this. And the last time around, it was a Beautification Commission process, which is kind of lucky that you guys are here. And the question now for the council would be, number one, do we want to retain the artwork and place it in a new location, or ask the artist to come pick up his stuff and remove it from the property? And number two, do we, as a council, then want to decide where to put it, or do we want to, again, delegate that responsibility to the Beautification Commission as it was in the past, or do we want to delegate that responsibility in a different direction? And do we have a staff report on this? We don't really, do we? It's just kind of informational. So I think it's a matter philosophically, talking about, A, do we want to keep it? If we want to keep it, who's going to be responsible for it, and go forward from there? So who would like to speak first? And I'd ask each of you to comment on it. Councilmember Lingle, and we'll just start from your side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just handed a, I guess it's minutes from a meeting back in 2004, where, as you had mentioned, that it was, at that point, the, turned over to the Lompoke Beautification Commission for the coordination and, with applicable departments involved. So my recommendation will be to turn it over to the Beautification Commission. However, I do have an opinion on this.
And that's valuable for the commission, and that's why they're sitting here.
Okay, well, good. If I recall, in the past, this art, what everyone, does everyone realize what we're talking about? We're talking about the art that is in-
Metal sculpture.
Sculptures in, on the corner of H and Ocean. If I recall, in the past, the artist used to come on a regular basis and maintain this art, sand down any rust that was forming, take care of repainting it, and it was kept in relatively good condition. The artist is now living, at this point, out of town, very seldom, very seldom in the area, and I'm concerned about the upkeep of this art. Now, whether it's going to be the Beautification Commission taking care of it, that'll be up to them. But I'm concerned that we will be responsible for this art that may become rusty and look terrible in one of our parks. So I'm concerned about that. The other thing is, I don't know if we should really get involved in removing personal property from another person's private property, because they don't want it there. If the, in my opinion, if the property owner does not want something on their property, they should have it removed. The email that we got from the property owner indicates that the city, the owner will expect the city to have a, more or less, a, an insurance policy, holding the city, holding the property owner harmless, and the property owner named as a, I guess, for the lack of a better term, a beneficiary to that, or-
Additional insured.
Additional insured to that. So it appears it will be an expense to the city to move this, because the property owner doesn't want it. So I'm not, and I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure if there's a redeeming quality in this art. Now, don't take me wrong, I love art. If you go to my home, you'll see some nice pieces of art. I just personally didn't, don't find this, these pieces redeeming. So, but, I have no problem with turning over to the Beautification Commission. If there's some redeeming qualities to this, and they think it's a valuable asset to the community, I would have no problem with them, at that point, making a recommendation. Saying that, I've said my two cents, and hang me later if you want. Councilmember Starbuck?
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder, so, yeah. I personally, there are 12 pieces there, some small, some large. I really think that because the city is going to incur expense moving them, that, in my personal vision, I think short move would be ideal. Art alley, pocket park, centennial, museum, I think they could be dispersed in there and done relatively quickly, and they will still maintain that type of art in that area. So, I mean, I don't think we should give them back to the owner. He's currently in Maine. It's just one of those that would be a hassle. I understand that the person that has taken the property back does want those removed. It's not the same owner that had them there when they were put on.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. From the staff report, it cites James Wolfe, who is interested in displaying his metal artwork in Lompoke on a long-term, temporary basis. So I believe this temporary time for appreciation of this particular art has passed. I think, to be quite honest, it's become a representation of something that's occurred in our community with LH CDC, and it's referenced to many, many times in the public in negative light. So I don't think it should be our cost. That's my concern as well. If we ask Mr. Wolfe, if we thank him for allowing us to use it for this long, whose responsibility would it be to get it back to him? But at the end of the day, I'm fine with the Beautification Commission coming up with a recommendation. If they feel that there is a better location to have it placed, I'm open to considering that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will go along with the Beautification Committee, sorry, Commission, to determine what to do with this. And I think that's all I have to say. I will keep my opinions to myself. Thank you.
I concur with the beauty is in the eye of the beholder. The mural on the side of the Chamber Building is definitely example of that for me. Just to your question, Councilmember Lingle, the city is self-insured, so there wouldn't be a real cost, other than typing out a certificate. There, I guess people feel strongly both ways about this, because I've heard it referred to as beautiful and great for the corner, and I've had it returned, had it heard, referred to as a pile of scrap iron. But it is here, and some people like it, and to Councilmember Starbuck's point, we certainly have places we could put it. So I'm, I guess I'm happy with the Beautification Commission working on it. So let me do this in the motion form. So direct staff, the staff liaison of Beautification and Appearance Commission, to place on the next agenda the Commission discussion and action related to the relocation and placement of sculptured artwork from the corner property at H and Ocean Avenue, or recommend against it. And they can, my thought behind that is, they can make the decision, they don't need to come back and tell us, they can just do it and go on with life.
I'll second.
Okay. Yep. Next. Actually, should have done that first. Okay, anybody want to talk about the public artwork that we're discussing here now? Now that I already made a motion? Oops. But don't worry, if you influence us, we'll change the motion.
Yeah, hi. My name is Steve Storman. I'm involved with Occupy Lompoke. As you may or may not know, we are there pretty much every week. I'm there every Saturday. If there needs to be something done to maintain that, I'll do it. You know, you don't need to give me any staff or money or anything, I'll just do it. As we say in the Occupy lingo, I'll bottom line it. Thank you.
All right, before you go away, be sure you talk to one of these nice folks right here, because these four folks, guys, raise your hands, beautification folks, yeah. Okay. Anyone else? Come on down.
I'm a little puzzled about the art. I like it, I don't, I don't really care whether it's there or not, except for the alternative.
You have to tell us your name.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon. James Downey. If it's not there, then there, what is there? It's nothing but an empty lot of weeds. It's, unless there's some other proposal that's given, but the city doesn't have anything to do with the property anymore, it's not owned by the city, and I don't think the city should pay to have it removed. If the owner, new owner bought the property with the pieces on there, I'm kind of puzzled why he would. I mean, it was dedicated for the use of the public, but it was given to LH CDC for that purpose, as I understand it. That's what I think the plaque says on the corner.
Yeah, when you finish, I'll go one more time around it.
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing, you know, the facts about it, if they're different than I understand. But I wouldn't personally be in favor of the city paying anything to have that, the artwork removed. I think the owner should do it. They apparently don't, they don't like some, the owner doesn't like some art, and they don't want some people on the property. I think he should be responsible for it, if he wants it moved.
Okay, so, anyone else? One once, go on twice? Come on down, don't be bashful.
Mary Saladino, Lompoke, citizen. Well, I hesitated to come up, because I arrived a few minutes late, and I didn't hear the entire conversation. But I think you're talking about the artwork at Ocean and H.
Yes.
And my question would be, are you going to make that area an old-town area for Lompoke?
Go ahead and finish up, and I'll cover it all.
And if you are, it seems to me like it would be part of the Beautification Committee's or Commission's plan to make it look like old-town, rather than contemporary art. I mean, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, so let me go one more time around this, because I think probably we all up here know a little more, a little bit more about it, and I should have done a better explanation. Back in 2004, the Economic Development Coordinator of the City of Lompoke, who was then Kate Griffith, worked with the artist and a local friend of his to bring this artwork to Lompoke, and it was placed on that location for some period of time presumed to be then ending in about 2008, because that was when construction was due to start there. For a number of reasons, that construction did not start, and so the artwork has continued to occupy that property. With the, the closeout of LH CDC, that property was returned to the property owner, who had received a down payment and some payments, but who had not been paid for the property. The owner of the property was not involved in the artwork placement there. And so consequently, he came to the city, actually came to me, and said, hey, what do you guys want to do with your art? And I went back and talked to Kate Griffith, who had coordinated this originally, and then asked to have it put on the agenda, so the council could make the decision on what to do with regard to this. So that's how we got all the way down this road from 2004 until today. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The gentleman, when you ask the question, the alternative, I don't think there is an alternative, because the property owner wants it removed. So whatever we decide, the property owner wants it gone, so either we will have the Beautification Committee, at the expense of the city, remove it, or the property owner will probably have it removed. So there really isn't an alternative. In regard to the lady's question of being involved in the beautification of the old-town area, here again, that's private property, it's not city property, so the development of what happens on that property is really up to the property owner, bringing forward something to the city and have it approved. It's not really the decision of the city, whether it's going to be part of, well, it is part of the downtown area, but what happens down there, it's really the property owner and what they bring forward to the city, whether the art is part of it, or whether it's something else.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing no one, could we vote, please?
Mr. Mayor, could you repeat the motion, please?
Direct the staff liais, can you cancel the vote, please? Direct the staff liaison of the Beautification and Appearance Commission to place on the next, next agenda, Commission discussion and action related to the relocation, placement of sculptured artwork from the corner property at H and Ocean Avenue, or not? And I guess I would add one more sentence, that this decision does not need to come back to the council. They're going to act and get her done. Everybody good with that?
Mary Lynn, meaning for anybody who's interested in having the art stay within our community, I suggest you go to the Beautification Commission meeting and attempt to lobby them as well. Thanks.
Okay, anything else? And now, please vote, please. And that passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to item one, I believe that we glossed over the first opportunity for oral communications, so we should back up to that before we move on to item one.
Okay. Anyone want to talk to us about anything else, other than item one? They're going to have their meeting now. They were just, they weren't here for us, they were here for their meeting. Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll close. Oh, sorry, thought you were headed with them. Yeah, it's all right.
Okay, my name is Ralph Widener, and I've got two issues I want to address for this city council, okay? I've been a resident of Lompoke for 16 years, and I'm all over the city, I do a lot of community work for the veterans, and I see a lot of things going on. I have two big things I really want to know. Why does this city council have to always have some consultant from somewhere else tell them how to do this city, what, how to make it better? Why don't we do that ourselves? Can't we make decisions about that? Why do we have to spend all this money on these different places to tell us what to do? That's number one. Number two, I'm going to speak on regards to the homicide that was over there on H and Cypress the other day. I thought it was very upsetting, okay? And another thing I want to know, why was that body left out there, as long as it was? That's not procedure. Usually, somebody calls the coroner, they come, get the body covered, get it out of there. Why did it lay there, as long as it did? With everybody seeing it, kids, everybody around there, seeing this body laying there, okay? Yes, they covered it, but you could still see that that's what it was. Why didn't they remove it? Can anybody give me that answer? Okay?
Because that was an officer-involved shooting. Immediately after the shooting, we turned it all over to the Sheriff's Department, who is also the coroner, by the way. And so they were in control of the scene, and they made those decisions, not us.
Okay, I understand that. The sheriff, because Lompoke was involved in it.
Yeah, so that was the, the on-scene decision of the sheriff's investigator. I share your-
Okay, so in other words, you're telling me, nothing could be done until the sheriff took over that situation, right?
The sheriff took over the situation-
Okay.
-almost immediately, and the choice of, what was done after that, and the fact that the man laid there, was their decision.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I see what you're saying, I understand that. But still, I don't believe the proper procedure was used, okay? Now, I know the sheriff got come and take, because it involved two of our officers, I understand that, okay? But still, the question is, why did it take them so long and leave that body there, before they could decide what they were going to do? That's what, that's my question, okay? To me, that's not police procedure. Sheriff, CHP, or whoever, have a son that's a police officer up in Marina, and I called him, and that, he says, that's not the way it's done, okay? So I'm looking for an answer, why? You give me what you give me, I understand that. But I'm not satisfied, okay? I believe that body should have been removed quicker. I know the sheriff has to be there, but why did it take so long? And said it was almost 6 o'clock in the evening. That is crazy, okay?
I will be happy to give you the sheriff's phone number.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And with regard to your question on consultants, I think actually this council has really minimized the number that we use. There are several reasons that we use them. I think the number-one reason, thinking back as you were asking that question, is in many cases, we have no choice. So for instance, with the Park Pool Assessment District, we're required by the ordinance to have, it's not a consultant, there's actually a different name for him, but we're required to have that engineer, I think it is, do that process to set those rates. Also, with regard to utility rates, we're required by California law to hire a consultant to do this work. So probably 80% of the consultants we use are because it's a requirement of law. Occasionally, we get into something where the level of technical expertise is beyond what we have, or the, we want to separate ourselves from that process, so that we all feel like we're getting an answer coming back, and an example of that would be the consultants that we currently have reviewing documents from LH CDC. That the goal of the council was to get a neutral third party to look at it and come back to us with the information, so. Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Martin, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In fact, I would like to get a factual number regarding the number of consultants that this council has hired, and compare that to previous council. My remembrance, being in two councils for almost two years now, that I don't really see any much difference between the previous council and this council regarding, usually when we do hire a consultant, which I would say 90% of the time comes out of a staff recommendation. I do know two of them, the LH CDC and the Agwells. We did hire a consultant to determine that. So it would be interesting to actually get, you know, the actual facts, and I'm sure that the city does have the records and could provide a comparison, if the council wishes to do so.
Yeah, quick look at the minutes should, should probably, that's an interesting, I'll take a look at the minutes. Good question. Anyone else? So now we're down to written communications. Any written communications? Nope. Oral communications, last two minutes. Anybody want to talk about something? Come on down, Mary.
I don't think it will take that long. I just wanted to ask, when we were talking about the mission statement before, and you said, we do have one, does that reflect the old general plan, or a new general plan?
Reflects the 1997 general plan, but also, this council, in one of our many discussions, talked about a revision to that.
Okay, could you please do me a favor? Could you, at some place, display what the mission statement is for the city?
Yeah, I can get that for you.
And make it available here at the city council meeting?
I'd be happy to get that for you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Costa has it, she can read it right now.
See, that's the whole thing. That's the whole thing. We don't know where we're headed, because we don't have it in front of us.
I'll get it for you, Mary, no problem.
Thank you. The other thing is, I have an example in regard to industry and business being together. Suppose we had a business that wanted to come, or an industry that wanted to come in and make and sell American flags. Would they be able to make them here and sell them here? Is that what you mean by industry and business being together?
That question? Okay. Well, I was out of that, so. If they were in the industrial zone, or the business park zone, they could make them, and then they would be entitled to have up to 15% of their square footage, under the current ordinance, to have a retail sales facility-
To sell them there.
And there may have been a change here, but I'm not a party to that.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, and we have, okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you, I'll get that copy for you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications, and we will come back. Not until I read this. We will be adjourned to the Lompoke City Council meeting, a joint meeting with the Youth Commission, on Tuesday, June 19th, 2012, at 6:30 PM, and a regular council meeting immediately following the joint meeting.
Can I wear my flowered shirt?
Oh, oh my goodness, yes. And I'm supposed to announce to all, that next council meeting will be the Flowered Shirt Council meeting, because it is Flower Festival. So that includes everybody in the audience, get your flowered shirts out, and join us for Flower Festival. Thank you for coming. Moving on to item one. So, today I discovered that there is one, one parcel, which is behind my house, in the middle of an industrial zone, which turns out to be business park. So in addition to not being able to discuss industrial, I now can't discuss business park, and even probably more exciting, once upon a time, I operated my tow yard out of there, which I couldn't have done, because it was business park, but didn't know it at the time, and no, the city didn't stop me, so. Councilmember Starbuck, you're it.
Ms. Brees?
Thank you. Good evening, council. This is a Lompoke City Council public hearing to consider initial, initial public analysis, I'm sorry, professional analysis, of materials presented by Mayor Lynn, and preliminarily reviewed by the council, and to provide additional direction, as determined by the council, regarding a text amendment, Planning Division, File TA 1204, to the City of Lompoke Municipal Code, Section, Chapter 17.064, Industrial Zone. The recommendation is for the council to hold a public hearing, to consider the material presented in the staff report, and at the hearing, and provide direction, as determined by the council. To direct staff to forward the proposed text amendment language to the Planning Commission for consideration, at a public hearing, and to prepare a recommendation for adoption, or for the council to provide alternative direction. I would like to note that we did provide, as noted in the staff report, maps this evening to the council. We do have an exhibit over on the side, that shows both the existing industrial and business park designations, and the proposed industrial success zone. There were also copies available for the public in the lobby. So the background of the discussion is listed in the staff report, and information regarding the Central Avenue specific plan, which became the business park designation. These areas of industrial use were reviewed by the Planning Commission and the council in 2007, and put into one zone with two separate designations. The concept of heavy industrial uses was separated from business park uses, which were anticipated to be administrative office, or light research and development-type facilities. The- The... We have put in the staff report a few policy questions that we are requesting direction from the council, and originally, we were wanting to ask the council if a single designation within the industrial zone is what the council wants to see go forward, or if retaining the separation between the business park and the industrial is the direction that you'd like to see. We have looked at the definitions as they were proposed. There are some definitions in the existing code that have been removed or not carried forward in the proposed code. We've identified those, where we believe they should be retained. That is based on previous discussions at the Planning Commission level, and the language that is recommended to be retained is generally language that is explaining uses or considerations within the code, and it's just explanatory, makes it easier for an applicant to review. The one change under limited accessory use is our existing ordinance allows fifteen percent of limited accessory use, and the proposed change would be to increase it to twenty percent in the industrial zone as accessory, without any conditional use permit or other type of permit from the city. There are development standards that are also discussed. One reason that the building height is specified under the business park is the area is adjacent to the Lompoc Airport, and FAA regulations do require, there's specific requirements that we must comply with for any development. There's been quite a bit of discussion about fences in the industrial zone and how those are handled. Again, that language was changed in some of the proposed zoning, and we're just pointing it out to whatever the council would like us to proceed with. And we are just looking for general guidance. Does the council want us to provide the general guidance to the applicant under development standards or to remove them? There are also questions regarding the designation of business park being removed, and if any discussion that the council would like to have regarding these issues, we would then proceed and take that information forward to the Planning Commission for their discussion of this particular zone. So that completes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck. The first question that I have, Ms. Brees, is the policy question you have for city council is, does the city council want to have a single designation within the industrial zone, removing the area currently designated as business park? So I understand that that's the draft industrial zoning districts, if we were to go with the general industrial success zone, correct?
That's correct.
So what, I'm curious, in staff's point of view, what are the drawbacks of eliminating the business park designation? And, you know, I'm curious, how many instances the business park was actually used within, inside the city?
If you'll see the map that we've provided to you, that map will show the areas. Generally, they are along, in the existing, they're up on Central Avenue. That was the area of the Central Avenue specific plan, and the vision for that area, it was vacant, and it was envisioned as some technical type situation where you would have light industry, where you would have administrative offices, insurance type offices, things that were not heavy industrial. So you were separating the industrial uses. A heavier industrial use where you had truck terminals or perhaps repairs of heavy equipment, manufacturing of heavy equipment, this type of thing, would be more in the regular industrial zone. The business park was envisioned more as a place where there would be a number of businesses that could utilize potentially some same secretarial services, or they would have like uses, lighter industrial.
So, okay, although I understand the conceptual idea of what the business park would be, thank you for that, that's not necessarily what the reality is, is that correct? So north of Central Avenue, we do have some pretty heavy industrial. There's multiple wineries, which I would consider as heavy industrial, and also the Fargadala Building, which is in heavy industrial as well, right next to Aceco, correct? So this designation would show that it would be business park, but technically, is that business park?
It... The wineries generally are, though they're industrial, they're not, say, polluting type industrial, where they have the manufacturing type situation of auto repair, truck terminals, it's just a different type situation up there. The whole idea kind of changed when the Walmart Shopping Center was approved by a vote of the community. So, it is something, we have very limited land that is still available for any type of industrial, and generally, industrial uses do tend to be changing. We don't seem to have the heavy manufacturing that used to occur.
Would you also agree that the business park has been underutilized as it was originally intended, though?
We've not received that many actual requests for that type of use.
And I'm curious, you know, I don't know if you have the hard data at this point, but I'd be curious to know, out of all of the buildings and property that are designated as business park, how many are vacant or underdeveloped, or how many have folks there under maybe CUPs, or, you know, these situations where it's not technically business park, but it's just there, like, again, the Fargadala Building, I think, is one example of that. Do we have any information in that regard?
I do have the number of parcels in each designation that kind of shows the percentage. I do not have a breakdown of what the actual uses are within those specific zones.
Tell me again what data you have, and can you give me that data this evening?
Excuse me.
Thank you.
What I have is generally just a breakdown of the parcels that are in each zoning designation. And all that it shows, well, it does not show what the exact uses are within, but it shows that in the business park, there's a total of thirty-five parcels, and in the industrial, there's a total of one hundred and sixty parcels.
So for me, this is to council, if we do decide to send this back to the Planning Commission as a recommendation for them to consider changing it just to one designation, I would ask that this information be provided. Of those thirty-five parcels, which parcels are actually vacant or underdeveloped, or I guess, you know, have no development, and which parcels are there but are not technically business park? And then, of course, the last number would be what parcels are there, you know, not vacant or are developed and are business park? Because thirty-five parcels isn't very many, and especially if there's a really small percentage of these that don't even really fit the mold that we created, to me, I wouldn't be as concerned about eliminating it. But I don't want to eliminate it if there's negative consequence in that term. So, Councilmember Starbuck, I have comments throughout the staff report, but I don't know if we want to take it one piece at a time.
That's what I was gonna ask council. Do we want to go through policy question each one, or do we want to just go through the whole staff report?
I think that we should go step at a time, so we don't lose, you know, track of the conversation.
Okay.
So that's all I have in that regard. I'm curious to know what council thinks about eliminating the business park, thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Peretemp. I do see where Councilmember Costa is having hesitation or, you know, wondering about this. I share similar, but not exactly the same, concerns. What comes to mind for me, for example, is in that area, there is the granite shop, right? That, I believe that is part of the business park, not as an industrial. The granite store where they actually cut big slabs of granite, I consider that industrial, I don't consider that business park, but they are part of the business park. There is as well the wineries. Then there is another company, very interesting company in Lompoc, the GPS Company, which I would certainly think it belongs to a business park, and it is in a business park. So, the fact is that the way it has evolved in Lompoc is not quite right, because we do have businesses in the business park area that really shouldn't be in the business park area, should be in an industrial zoning area. Likewise, we have, perhaps, we have businesses that should be in a business park but not in an industrial. So, I do believe, I've lived in many cities, and if we get rid of the business park, that would be the very first city that I live on that doesn't have a business park zoning. I happen to have worked all my life in business park zonings, high-tech businesses, whether it's software or communications, they tend to be located in what we call business park areas, which are areas that, as it was intended, however, it didn't happen that way in this city. Don't know why, but it didn't happen that way. The intent was nevertheless to separate industrial versus business park. There is a value to that, in my view, there is a value to separate businesses that deal with communication, software, things of that sort, versus manufacturing facility that is grinding stone, that is crushing grapes, that is doing all of these other things. I mean, the intent here was to put businesses that are alike in an alike area, which I believe is a constructive concept. I do think it's a very worthwhile concept to have. So, why didn't it happen in Lompoc? I don't know. I mean, I don't know why. Does that mean that we don't have enough industrial zoning? That they went and located themselves in a business park instead of an industrial because there wasn't enough industrial lots? The other side of the coin is, why is the business park not filled with business park-like businesses? And that is, again, something that maybe our Economic Development Committee can tell us about what's going on there. Why are we not attracting these other businesses and we, you know, we're doing this? I don't think that the intent of just making it one and get rid of business park will solve the problem. I think we need to look deeper into it and understand why some of the businesses went in business park areas where they shouldn't have been there. What happened is that means that we don't have enough industrial, and if we don't have enough industrial zoning, then maybe we need to do that. But that doesn't mean that we have to take the business park and turn it into industrial. That means that we have to create more industrial, and still maintain a business park zoning, which I believe is a very valuable zoning for any city. Like I said, I think Lompoc would be the first one to never have one, to not have one, and that would not bear very well with future businesses that may want to relocate here.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Peretemp. I agree with Councilmember Martin that it's unusual for a city to not have a business park. I don't know if, I can't say for a fact that I've never been involved with a city that hasn't had one, but I agree that it would be unusual. However, I think we need to look at Lompoc. I think we have to really examine who we are and why we are, what we are. Let's take heavy industrial. We really don't have heavy industrial. We talked about grape crushing, we talked about the granite plant. I don't consider that heavy industrial. When I look at Lompoc, I, if we ask ourselves why we don't have it, and I believe it's because we are not on the 101 corridor. In my opinion, it's, for a heavy industrial, it's difficult to get raw products in, get finished products out. We're twenty-five, thirty miles off the 101 corridor, and people, people just aren't gonna pay for that expense of getting in and out. So, if we, if we ask ourselves, are we ever going to have heavy industrial? No, I'd like to say maybe we would, but realistically, I don't think we will. Then we look at, and I agree with Councilmember Martin, let's, we should look at why we don't have a successful business park. This is something Lompoc could have. With technology today, any business in the world could be located right here in Lompoc. It doesn't matter what type of business it is. We can locate it here, we don't need to be shipping products in, shipping products out. So eliminating a business park, or just saying we're, are we saying we don't want that type of business? I think that's what we have to look at. And I agree with Councilmember Martin, we need to take a serious look at this. Maybe the terminology that we're looking at using, it's, we're looking at industrial success zone. If I'm a high-tech company that would like to locate to here in Lompoc, and my place of location is industrial success zone, and I'm looking around for a zoning that's appropriate for mine, and I'd be looking for a business park, and that doesn't exist. So maybe the terminology is wrong in this. Maybe the term just business success zone would open up the idea of maybe bringing in the high-tech and bringing in light industrial. But I agree with you, Councilmember Martin, that eliminating the business terminology there may be limiting us for some of the businesses that can move here. And like I say, any business in the world can move to Lompoc, we don't need to limit ourselves. I think that's all I have to say at this point.
One of the questions that I guess is gonna come out of this for me is, there's a fine line between a manufacturing in a business park and manufacturing in an industrial complex, I think. One of the things I look at, and I know it's kind of hard to see over there, but if you look at the existing industrial zoning districts, and you drop down over here to the Wine Ghetto, now where we have the Zodovich Development happening, that is zoned currently as business park, when I don't really see it as a business park, as to a light industrial. And then right on the corner, we've listed it as business park when looking around it. So I'm wondering if these are areas that we would want to go ahead and say, you know, we should incorporate these into industrial. Let's look over here off of the A Street. There's the one little zoned area there as business park, and I'm not sure what is in that property right now. But when you get into the industrial or to the manufacturing, it's like Councilmember Martin says, you look up here to our only area where we have business park currently zoned, that was originally zoned as an industrial area. We have people in there cutting stone now, we have geotechnology, you know, we have lots of industries that are scattered throughout in here. I don't know, I think that if we were gonna have a business park, we would want to look at where we would zone that at. Inputs. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck. I guess what I'm thinking to myself right now is, you know, we need to not lose sight of why we're doing this. I hope we're not just doing it to fill up our time, which sometimes it feels like we do. But we are doing this for a certain reason, right? So what is that reason? I think we all need to make sure we're on the same page as to what goal we are trying to achieve with this. Are we trying to attract more big industry? Are we trying to attract more business park-style businesses? Are we trying to make it easier for any industrial uses to come in? You know, what is it that we're attempting to do? This was proposed in this way by Mayor Lynn, who although he has to recuse himself, I would be interested to hear as a citizen make a comment as to why he suggested this in the first place. Because I, you know, that's, I just want to remind everybody, and if we can get on the same page there, then maybe we can come up with, you know, what the solution is.
Well, let's take a look... Well, let's take a look, you know, on the staff report that was handed out, we do have the Chapter 17.064 Industrial Success Zone. And for everybody that doesn't have this, I'm going to read the basic definition of industrial zoning. This zone is intended to provide for light industrial, manufacturing, and limited accessory uses. The intent is to encourage sound industrial development in appropriate areas and to provide development standards to protect adjacent commercial districts. The zoning district is consistent with the industrial designation of the general plan. Business park zoning. This zone is intended to provide for planned industrial complexes in appropriate areas with sound development standards. The intent is to have primary users share common building complexes with common sign programs, building architecture, utility networks, and landscape areas in compatibly planned developments. The business park zoning district is consistent with the business park designation of the general plan land use element. The proposed language now is, this zone is intended, now this is for industrial success zone, this zone is intended to provide for a large variety of successful industrial, manufacturing, and accessory uses in appropriate areas that meet sound development standards. The intent is to have primary users share common building complexes with common sign programs, building architecture, utility networks, and landscape areas in compatibly planned developments when practical and maintain facilities that blend well into the surrounding neighborhoods. So, I think that our, what we're trying to determine is, is if we want to blend industrial and business park into the one definition that was just read. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck. So, I guess the question that needs to be asked, and that's why I asked in the first place for the information, is, you know, is the business park zoning district inhibiting any of that from happening? Is creating one instead of two designations what the solution to this problem is? And without real information on the business park itself, I, I agree, I will say that I agree that, and that's very odd there on Seventh Street to just have that one front-facing building, and then, you know, the Zodovich as well, that seems a little bit odd. And so, maybe there needs to be some cleanup done. But, I, again, this is the struggle that I'm having with doing it this way, is we don't have our general plan direction yet, you know, to say we need more industrial before we're getting into the nitty-gritty. So, now, it's, in a way, I think, putting the cart before the horse. So, that's the struggle that I'm having at this point. Thank you.
What's kind of an interesting, I just want to kind of interject, is it's like Councilmember Martner stated earlier. We have a stone cutter in a business park, and we have a technology company in an industrial park. And...
In a business.
The...
The Geo?
Geo?
It's in the...
Okay.
It is in the business. It's in the right place.
It's in the right place then, but, you know, so that's something like, Councilmember Lingo, or Martner, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I, I think Councilmember Costa made a good point. Maybe there is a cleanup effort that needs to happen here. Maybe there is a revision. Maybe there is a, you know, lot, lot by lot, or parcel by parcel considerations, which is the role of the planning commission. Thank you very much. It's not the role of the council to be doing parcel per parcel, you know, assignments and changes. So, I really do believe that, you know, the planning commission can look at the odd, the oddness of having that lot in the wine ghetto and the Zodovich property. The planning commission can also look when, whenever it gets to the general plan and answer the question, does this city have enough industrial zoning, or does it not? I think there, that's the role of the planning commission, in my opinion.
Councilmember Lingo.
Thank you. Ms. Breeze, if, recently, we're very fortunate, the city of Lompoc was very fortunate to acquire business denmat, and they're going to be moving into what is now the industrial zoning district. Is that correct?
No, business park.
It's business park.
Business park, I'm sorry, yes, business park, okay. They're going to be moving into the, what would that business, if they're just organizing and they're opening up their business here, how would we deem them? Would we deem them for a business park? Would we deem them for industrial, light industrial?
Well, when you look at the land use, which is on page, it shows as the last page of your staff report, it's Page 580 of our existing zoning ordinance. There are land uses, manufacturing, that are allowed in the business park area. And there's a number of them that can actually be assigned by a development plan going through the planning commission. The planning commission reviews the plans to make sure that industry that is proposing to establish in the business park is compatible with the other businesses in the area. They're presenting, preparing with enough parking, the architecture is appropriate. So, all of the conditions that would make them acceptable would be looked at by the planning commission. And there are executive offices that are a part of this particular new business that we would have. So, there, we could look at them as a distribution of wholesaling and manufacturing. When you look at the overall uses that they have, they would be appropriate in the business park area.
Okay. And then the Zodovich Winery, if, and they have just opened up here in town. Do you write currently have them in, they are in the...
It's, they're in a business park. That was the request when that area was established, when it went to the planning commission. The intention was for those warehouses to be utilized for wine storage. They were existing winery, or not existing winery, I'm sorry, they were existing warehouses and that had been developed in the county. The applicant came forward with a plan, as we all know, it had a hotel and, and a number of different components of it. But part of it was for them to be able to utilize those existing buildings, because those buildings did have some life in them. And a business park designation was the request. The intention was to have a light industrial-type situation and not allow heavy industrial in those cases.
Okay. Thank you. And here, I'm not, I don't mean to be speaking for the mayor, but the question was asked, if the mayor were here to speak as a private citizen, and I don't want to speak for him, but I believe his intent was to make the zoning more business-friendly. So, we would be able to do a blending. And when you lift, if you look at the proposed definition of the industrial success zone, the word "common" appears several times in there. So, I believe the intent of this is to be blending common businesses. I don't, if I look at this, it says, "The intent is to have primary users share common buildings in the complexes with common sign programs." So, if, what I'm getting out of this is, if we were to approve this, and it goes through, if the word "common" in there, I'm just asking for you, looking forward five years down the road, would you allow, with this language, would you allow a heavy indust, industry with wedges coming down and pounding steel next to a high-tech company that is making optical equipment? I don't think you would in, in the same building.
If they were industrial uses that were in the use list, that would be very difficult to separate a heavy industrial use from a technical, the high-tech industry, if you only have one zoning or one zoning district.
Even with the word "common," common industries, common uses?
It would be very difficult to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
I think in the old zoning ordinance, or the current zoning ordinance under business parks, one of the things that kind of throws a flag up to me is where it says planned complexes. And when we look at the zoning for what we do have in what's existing business park, it's all between Central and the airport. So, we're looking at business park and the word "complex" there, where industrial could be buy a lot, put a building in, manufacture. So, there, there is that difference there between the business park and the industrial zoning. Am I correct on this?
Well, in the business park, there is individual development. The, the Paly Winery is one example. They were a part of a larger lot that was subdivided. When that subdivision occurred, our ordinance at that time required a development plan to show the planning commission and the city how it, the entire parcel could develop. Did not have to be a specific industry that was shown, simply that this particular property could support the business park individual buildings. So, there was something that was actually shown on the Central Avenue parcel, which is the front parcel. Then there was something shown on that back parcel where Paly actually built. And additionally, there was a building shown on the parcel that developed ultimately as the parking lot. So, originally, it was shown as a common area. And some of those parcels are large parcels that have not yet been developed. There's that one along V Street, which is a 40-acre parcel, and there've been a number of people who've been interested in it. So, the, the idea is that you would be looking some of the area that is behind Walmart when they were subdivided. It was the same type of thing. You're looking at the large parcel and to see what potentially could happen. Doesn't mean that that is going to how, it's actually going to develop, because that is not the case. And when someone comes in with something that's different, that's fine, but you're just making sure that you're going to have something that would be a compatible-type situation back there, that they could work together with parking and all of the access and egress that's necessary.
Yeah, you know, because when I'm reading our current zoning ordinance with business park zoning, it's, this zone is intended to provide for planned industrial complexes. So, you're not looking for the one manufacturer to come in and open a shop here, open a, an industrial building. I'm seeing a whole complex in the form that we know business parks. And that's what I'm looking at here. If this whole piece is nothing but business park zoning, which means we have absolutely zero industrial available, according to our existing industrial zoning districts.
I'm sorry that we have no, no industrial land left?
Yeah, there's no industrial land out here.
And along Laurel. It's very limited.
Very limited on Laurel, I mean absolutely limited. But where we have the most property available, we've zoned the whole thing for business park. And that's why I'm thinking that the combination of, with the amount of property, I'm not sure where I'm going with this, but we've turned ourselves off with industrial zoning because there is none. And we've got a huge amount of business park, which according to our zoning ordinance is to provide for planned industrial complexes. So, I think this is something we should look at with our verbiage in the zoning ordinance when we look at the available property that we have. Councilmember Lingo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam. I agree with you. We, when looking at this, we have very limited industrial zoning. The only industrial zoning we have is really up and down Laurel Avenue. And there is a little portion at the very end of Central Avenue. So, then again, if I interpret what the mayor was trying to accomplish by this, making it a more business-friendly community where we, we may have to blend some common uses. And I, and I'm hoping that if, if we are to adopt this commercial success zone...
Industrial.
Commercial, what is it? It's, industrial success zone, I'm sorry, yeah. If we're to adopt this, I'm hoping that this city would not allow uncommon uses in the same buildings. I think the terminology using the word "common" there would make it, I believe, somewhat exclusive for the heavy industrial with the business park or the high-tech. But I also agree with Councilmember Martner that this is probably a decision that the planning commission should make, and hopefully at the end of this evening, will pass this on to the planning commission for their consideration. Thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I remember when we were discussing the general plan update, which is kind of in the background right now, and I think this is the question for the general plan update. Is the city of Lompoc lacking industrial zoning? If, if the city of Lompoc is compared to other cities, if the city of Lompoc is looked at with a projection of population growth, does the city of Lompoc have enough industrial zoning as what we know industrial zoning, manufacturing sites? That question has not been answered. I think we looked at it for a little bit during the general plan update, and if I recall, the answer was that there was very little industrial zoning in the city. For whatever reason, that's what it is. The business plan, the business park zoning, I think it serves a purpose. I don't think it should be in replacement of the industrial zoning. I think both have a place to exist in any city, and they should exist in all cities. So, it is, again, the challenge of the general plan update to draw out, you know, the zonings that will satisfy those requirements. So, it is, I believe, strictly a planning commission issue that we're dealing with here. They look at it, they know what the parcels are, and I think they need to revise it. And yes, it doesn't make sense what we have here. Maybe there's going to be too much business park in the Central Avenue area. Maybe there's got to be an industrial component there. The only industrial component that we have is the historical Laurel Avenue, which is all Lompoc where industry was. Okay? It stays as that. It's just how the city grew. There was no planning after that, unfortunately. You know, the city didn't grow to say, we're going to put industry there, we're going to put business park over here. I do believe that they both need to exist. I don't think that they should be substituted. And, and, you know, damage one for the other, I think they both have a place. And I think that's the challenge of the general plan update, and that's where we should go. And give it back to the planning commission. And I basically don't have much of a recommendation regarding this. I think the planning commission needs to look at it and see what the needs are for industrial and, of course, maintain, you know, a planned development with common areas.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck. Councilmember Lingo, I'm a little confused by what you stated, only because I think it is a contradiction in and of itself. When you say that you would hope that two uses that are incompatible with each other would not be allowed in the same, you know, direct vicinity or same building, the only way to guarantee that is to write that into policy. That's what these regulations are here for. So, I feel like, you know, this is what's frustrating me about this council before as well, is we think that we have good intentions now, but there's no guarantee that these intentions will stay once we're gone. So, that's why we write policy, that's why we have regulations. So, that's my concern here. I, I still am not convinced, one way or the other, that either keeping business park or getting rid of it is going to do what we're attempting to do here. So, I, I feel like I, I want to know what the public has to say about it. Maybe there's somebody who has some experience in, in looking at industrial properties. You know, I'm interested what the planning commission has to say, has to say about it. And I'm really, as I said, interested in what, what the status of these 35 parcels are in the business park currently. I think that either way, there are some things that need changing and tweaked, it, for sure, at the very least. I'm just not sure we need to do away with business park altogether. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingo.
Thank you, Councilmember Costa, for asking for the clarification. And my, my only clarification would be going back to the terminology with the word "common." And that's where I'm hoping that we allow some flexibility and common sense for the planning department in the future, instead of writing policy that is so strict that it restricts businesses from coming to town because there is no land use available. to town because there is no land use available. I agree that we should be directing, we should write policy that is at least directing in the direction we want to go. The word "common" buildings, "common signage," "common uses," the word "common" in there, I think, in my feeling, in my opinion, it would give them enough direction that it knows where we want to go. But there is very limited, as we all mentioned, there's very limited industrial zoning in this community right now. And again, I think we need to go back to look at what Lompoc is. And even though we'd like to see ourselves as the Silicon Valley of California, we're not. Would we like to be? You're damn right we would be, but we're not going to be, in my opinion. I'd love to see it that way, but realistically, we're a nice community, and we're going to get some nice light industry to town. I believe we'll get some high-tech businesses. We already have some high-tech businesses here in town. We're gonna get more businesses like the Denmats that provide good jobs for the community. It's not high-tech, well, part of it's high-tech, but it's not high-tech like Silicon Valley, but it certainly provides some nice jobs. I think that's what we are, that's what we're going to get. And I think the idea of having a zone that is friendly to all those businesses, and as long as we have some common sense, using the word "common" in there, I think we can accomplish that. But that's my explanation where I think we're gonna be directing, hopefully in the future.
Ms. Bries, I have a quick question, though. What is the minimum size for a business park complex?
There really, as far as the minimum size, we would have a minimum lot area.
So it'll be based upon the size of the lot, then, would be the allowed size of the business complex? Was the same would hold true for an industrial building?
That's correct.
So there's common denominator there. So when we're talking about this now, we are dealing with setbacks, side fence height, all of the same things come into play. It's just whether it's zoned to have a business complex or an industrial building is the real difference.
And a business complex is, in the business park, you can develop a single building. And we have done that.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes?
One major difference between industrial and business park is the development standards, more so than the uses. The current standards require a minimum lot size of two acres, and any proposed subdivision creating parcels of less than 10 acres must be accompanied by conceptual development plan approval.
That's for business park.
That's for business park. In the industrial zone, there are fewer setback requirements. You can almost build lot, lot line to lot line. Essentially, the result is that with an industrial parcel, you're going to be accommodating everything you need, parking and so forth, just on that same lot with the building. With a business park, as you often have in shopping centers, you'll have common parking areas. You may have separate parcels that could even have separate ownership, but you'll have reciprocal easements for access and parking, just as you might with a major shopping center. The end result is that business park development ends up being more expensive, because you basically need more land for each square foot of actual usable industrial space. But it does tend to create a nicer development, a nicer atmosphere, than the sort of cheek-by-jowl traditional industrial development.
So if you had minimum industrial land available, or minimum property available for any type of development, the ideal footprint would be to go with industrial zoning over business park, because you said lot line to lot line, by setback parking, landscaping, et cetera, in the business park?
You will get more square feet of actual usable industrial space per acre with the classic industrial zoning than you will get with business park zoning.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck. And I feel like we're starting to get somewhere, because I, something I wanted to bring up as well is that we're, I think what we're forgetting is one of the things that we wanted to deal with in residential and even commercial is these non-conforming uses. So I think part of what we need to do here is make sure that, I think that that's the issue, as you said, with expense. So if there's somebody, if there's an industrial building in a business park area, for them to come up to the development standard would actually be quite cost-intensive. And if for some reason the use isn't utilized for a certain period of time, that use may be lost if the non-conforming use is abandoned. Is that correct?
It's a little different than in a residential or commercial. An industrial use, if it is a building that is built for an industrial use, it would accommodate different types of industrial uses.
But as I'm going back to having lack of information on our 195 parcels in total, it seems as though the reason we're discussing this in the first place is because there may be some inconsistencies with what is where in what zoning area. So what we want to make sure we do is facilitate and not inhibit any industrial uses. I agree that the maximum square footage, I think that that was a really great point. But what we need to make sure of is the folks who are in a certain designation, we're not making it more difficult on them in any way. I think that that's another concern that we need to discuss. So I just want to throw that out there to consider it that way as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. But I guess we are getting down to the bottom of it, and it is about development standards. And it looks like that this simplification of going into this industrial success zone will remove some of those development standards, which effectively will make business parks unattractive to high-tech industries. I mean, if you're gonna build lot to lot, if you're not gonna have common landscape areas, if you're not gonna have, you know, the business parks that we know of, and they're gonna be turned into this industrial success, where the development standards are going to be put more toward an emphasis on the industrial, cheaper, maximize the square footage for industrial, and don't have this, you know, nicer environment of what a business park is. I can see now where this is going. And, you know, I think there is a place for both in Lompoc. I think we need to have industrial zoning, and I think we need to have business park zoning. I don't think we should just lower our denominator and don't ask, and just go for the cheapest just so we can get something going. I do believe that we need to have both, and I do believe that we need to keep the standards high as opposed to lower them.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you. Councilmember Martner, I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit. If you look at the, I believe it's a zone similar to what we're thinking of right now, but it is, it's a business park across from Costco on Hollister Avenue in Galito. There's some high-tech industries in there, and they are sharing common parking lots. There's very little landscaping in there. It's just building upon building upon building. And there are some pretty high-tech companies over there. The one that I'm thinking off, right offhand is Citrix Online. It's a computer-based company. So I'm not sure that this would prohibit high-tech companies coming to a business park when they are really lot to lot. There's some pretty nice high-tech companies in that property across from Costco. Just one example I can think of.
Councilmember Martner.
I don't think we need to argue what's going on in Galito with Costco, but if you wanna go to Galito and look at the technology parks, they have a very different feeling. And I believe those are business parks. So, you know, not here nor there. I mean, I don't wanna get into the arguments, you know, is it gonna be nicer or not nicer? I do believe that any city should have both zonings, because I think it's the healthy thing to do. Any city should have industrial zoning with the lower standards from the point of view of cost-effectiveness, so they can maximize their square footage for industry. I also believe that cities should have business parks where may be high-tech, may be insurance companies, you know, there is lots of things that go in business parks, that do have nicer landscaping, that do have more open areas, that they tend to be two-story buildings, and they don't have fences all around, and et cetera, et cetera. I do believe there is a place for both of them in Lompoc. And I think it is the task of the planning commission, along with a lot of public input, to, you know, to determine where they should be. It's part of the general plan update, as I understand it.
I'm gonna go ahead and accept public comment, please.
We wanna talk about beauty, business park, nice landscaping, common parking. I look at some of these areas that are business park-related. The area between Walnut and Laurel, between A and Third, where the railroad tracks go through, it's designated business park, and there's not great landscaping. I think the best place is, Suntory has a couple trees and concrete parking lot. The Wine Ghetto, business park, not a whole lot of landscaping, huh?
It's industrial.
Oh, okay, that's industrial, okay. Oh, the colors have thrown me off a little bit, I'm sorry. Maybe fuchsia is, you know, not my color to look at here. But if you look at some of the other areas that are industrial and business park, and I do like the idea of mixing these two, because we are who we are, and not the areas are all that great-looking. And, you know, I'd like to see some really nice business parks, but as it is now, if we mix it, and there is that terminology of "common" that Councilmember Lingle brings up, is if it's "common," and if that's in the language, you're gonna go with what's around you. So if there's an industrial or business park, and there's adjacent with nice landscaping, you're not gonna wanna put, at least planning commission's not gonna allow them to put something wall-to-wall, top-to-bottom, industrial, no landscaping, no parking, because that's something the planning commission can do. And further, I do understand that when these things are brought up, you guys do agree on bringing this to council. And if that is correct, if that's correct, you guys go through and discuss what's gonna be brought up, predetermined?
It would, the planning commission, if it didn't...
Well, no, no, to bring it to this agenda, this item, who brought it to here? I know that it was under the direction of Mayor Lynn, but I do, you guys all do agree to bring it out and discuss it.
Right.
And we talk about the city spending too much time on consultants and, you know, money going anywhere. The Agwells, as great of an idea it was, I see as an enormously waste of money. And right now, we're spending money on city staff to go through this, propose this, get this done, and we're arguing at it. So if it's not passed, then it's just like paying consultants, we're essentially losing money, 'cause we're not gonna agree, and we're gonna go over it again, and planning commission might go through it. And, I mean, I like the idea, mix the two. You have terminology in there that would put "common" in between everything, so you're not gonna have two businesses next to each other that don't go with each other. And I'm sure there's other zones, or is this all the industrial and business park zones in the entire city? You know, it's a hard, and it's a hard decision to make, 'cause even right now, it's hit or miss, but I'd like the idea. Terminology can change a little bit, but I'd like to see something go through to at least not waste the last hour of everybody's time. Because I know that familiar faces out here, we're all concerned citizens, it's about the same amount of faces, and we'd like to see good decisions made and no money wasted. Thank you.
Hello, John Lynn, citizens of Lompoc. So let me talk about why this kinda came down the road. The first thing that people talked to me about was the lack of success with the business park zone on Central Avenue, which was created in 1976. And between 1976 and today, we've built nine buildings in that parcel, including one parking lot. In that same timeframe, looking at Buellum, they've completed two industrial parks, a town a quarter, tenth our size, I don't know. In Passerobles, they've completed very substantial industrial zones. And so there's a marked difference. The other thing that I think brought it into a really sharp perspective for me was the difference between the industrial zone, which is the Wine Ghetto, and the business park zone, which is the now Zodovich property across the street. While one built out, filled up, and was very successful, the other one, because of the business park restrictions, sat and sat and sat and sat and sat. So those are the two things that I saw that got me going down this road. Secondly, this economy is very different, and the costs involved in developing industrial park property are substantially higher. And I will share with you that I've spent quite a bit of time trying to bring someone, an industrial-type business to Lompoc that would fit in either category. And the make-a-difference deal is five cents a square foot. But it's five cents a square foot on the industrial side. And within business park, the price is so high there that they wouldn't even consider the property. The next thing I think I want to share is that if we truly believe in this compact urban form that we've talked about repeatedly, and we want to minimize annexation, or, you know, we want to try to live within our means, then it behooves us to get the most value out of the property. And I won't profess to be an expert at this, but I've started reading about what Councilmember Martner was talking about, which is how much land do you need and what's it going to take? And looking at just the number of people that commute out of town, not even considering the unemployed, we're about one and a half million square feet underbuilt and industrial. Okay? To accomplish that, we need to get as much as possible on the land that we have. Today, in the industrial area, we have three small parcels available, one of which we're considering for a transit terminal. That leaves two, so there is no industrial space. On the other hand, in the business park zone, we have a number of parcels that have sat for years and years and years, and no one's built on them. So there's a difference between them. Remembering that what we do here is a recommendation for the planning commission to go into this in depth, all we're doing here is suggesting to them that this is a concept they consider. And just by way of comparison, what have we built in the business park? We've built two wineries, and we've built, I'm gonna say 16 in the industrial zone. We've put Raytheon in there. We haven't built anything similar to that in the industrial zone. We have a company that sells government surplus aircraft parts that occupies two buildings. We have one more building that, I don't think the shredding company's there, I think there's a plumber in there now, and some storage for another company. And then we have a parking lot for the Chumash. And if you look at those uses and you go over to the industrial zone, you'll see very similar uses. But to my prior point, and this is really clear to me because of all the people I talked to to bring a business to Lompoc, it's about finding the right site. And it's very difficult to make it happen in the business park zone because of the increased costs. And if we rule those out, then we're gonna continue to have a business park zone that just isn't getting developed. We need to make it as easy as possible while protecting the public good. So there's my five cents worth. Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Saladino, a citizen. As I'm listening to all of your conversation, I'm searching to find out what your mission goal is for the city. Have you established one, and I haven't heard it? Do you have a mission statement about what you want your city to become? It seems to me... It seems to me that would be an important thing for the city council to establish. And then from there, once you've established your goal, you have it in front of you like a carrot, and you can work toward that goal, if you can agree on a goal. That's just something for you to think about. The other thing, as I think I'm hearing, we're just suffering from growing pains. And some things have already been established, which are good. They should not be thought as that that was not, and because we did it that way, then we can't do it some other way another time. When you're growing, you are expanding, and you're obviously going to find new ways and better ways of doing something, once you get into it. And you want to find out what it is that businesses need. Be careful, don't box yourself in such a way that you cannot grow anymore. I'm hearing you ask about, should you have business and industrial together? Well, I'm not totally sure of my terminology, Councilman Lingle, but it seems to me like industrial is something that is made, and business is something that is sold. Suppose you had a little tiny business that wanted to make wonderful homemade ice cream there, locally made from some of our local dairies. If they wanted to do that, would they be able to sell it from their business? And then I, I don't totally understand the description of dent mat, denmat, but I think it's a business that wants to make dental products. Are they going to be able to sell them here? It's wonderful that they want to come here, that's wonderful, and thank you for getting them here. Are they going to be able to sell their products here in Lompoc? Or do they have to go somewhere else to sell them? I'm just trying to get you to see the whole picture. If you focus so much on the tiny details, you'll get bogged down. So establish your goal, your visionary goal, just dream a little bit of what your visionary goal is that you would like to have for your city. And I'm sure you've done that. And the terminology is hard to come up with, to make everyone, to make it agreeable to everyone, is what I meant to say. But establish your goal and then work toward your goal, and good luck.
Thank you. One of the things, let me answer a quick question. The very first page of our general plan is a vision statement.
Oh, okay. What is it?
I don't have that memorized.
See, if we had it in front of us...
Turns out with vision statement, but, and then, the other thing is, in the industrial parks, one of the changes in what currently happens is there is a 15% square footage allowed for retail, and one of the proposals in this is to allow up to 20% retail sales in the industrial area.
And do it. What business would want to come in and be confined to, or can only sell a certain amount? Make it possible for them. Make it possible for them. Dream big. Build it or provide for it, and then they can come.
I was just thinking of that part, of that part of town, that's where I have my business. And since we've moved there four years ago, a few of the buildings in, I think would be the business zone, park, have been occupied, yet there's still several, two doors down that are vacant and have been for a long time. And I think turning everything into a business park, and my, reading the map, shows some of those parcels west of O are vacant. And that's in the industri, I think in the industrial business park area, the way I'm looking at that. Yes, there's fields there that could go to industrial. And if you look at the division that's up there right now, O Street, from Walmart over, already separates most of a business park and is occupied as business park. I don't know if it's zoned that way or not, but it's already kinda got its own division. And then the west of there, you have, behind the Humane Society, that area over there, I don't know if we're talking that far west, there's different businesses that are more quote-unquote industrial and not having your, you know, foot massage place next door or something, you know? So I think it's kind of already made its own division, yet, so it would separate itself very easily with the two zonings there, of the business park and the commercial. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Yedidia DeVries. Just three quick thoughts. One, I think Mary's point about vision actually speaks to something that both Costa and Martin have already raised, that this is all a bait and cart before the horse, and that we're waiting breathlessly our new general plan, and that we should probably be guided more by that. Second, and Costa brought this up briefly already, that, that we're not, you're not actually just combining these two. There's, there's a change in the cessation clause, there's the change in 50%, there's some change in the heights, there's a lot more going on here than, than just combining, and that, that actually raises the possibility that maybe you actually have more options than just saying, right, combining, that if, there's a problem with the business park, that maybe you should just make changes to the business park zoning, that, or, that, or change the industrial, or, or that, that, there are more creative solutions out here than just saying, well, the business park isn't working, so we're gonna fold it into the industrial. If, if there's a problem with the business park, then perhaps we should actually look at those problems and address those, instead of just kinda giving up on unfolding it into the industrial, while making some minor changes, you know, under, under the table at the same time. And then third, because of, you know, my background, my academic background, I, I like data, and I'm seeing kind of a dearth of data here. For example, I would be interested to see, have other cities gotten rid of their business park zones? And if so, did that lead to increased economic development? Or, or not? I mean, we can't have been the first city to have made changes to our zoning ordinances, and presumably, it, there are, you know, there are folks who do study public policy, we could check, have any of this actually led to economic development? And so I would, I would at least like to see a little bit more data, not, not just, I mean, I think Costa's right, more data about what's currently in our city, but also more data about what other folks have tried and whether or not that worked at all, other than sort of just hoping that, you know, well, this doesn't work, so we're gonna fold it to this other thing, and then we'll see what happens. Thank you, and have a lovely evening.
Pam Wall, local resident. I just have to agree with Mary in what he just said, and, and what Councilman Martin and Costa said. This is the cart before the horse, and I know you don't want to be here all night, but this is a, a real issue for this town. I lived here a long time ago and came back, and it's like a bomb hit it. And it's like, what is the plan? You say you have a vision, but I don't know what it is either. Heck if I know. And it's like a freefall, and mostly it's falling. We're in the process now of wanting to redevelop whole town, and what do we want to look like there? And who do we want to attract? Do we want to be a citizen, retirement, senior citizen place? Do we want to be a tourist attraction? Agriculture? What is it that we want to be? I don't know, and I can't see. We have a lot of empty businesses, it seems like all the time, there's another one going under. The economic, I mean, the economic development group is great, but, but what are we, what are we aiming at? What, what is our long-term goal? We're trying to deal with how things are here right now, today. And these little groups over here, and this little group's over there, and so we want to make it, it fit them where they are today. We need to look at a 20-year plan and decide where we want to be down the road. Like she says, you've gotta have it out here, before you see the opportunities and who you want to go after, and who you want to attract. Who do we want to be when we grow up? That's all I have to say.
Jim Mosby, Lompoc, council. Answer a couple of your questions. What happened to light industrial land around Lompoc? There was approximately 270 acres of light industrial commercial around Lompoc that was eliminated. It was just an outskirts of Lompoc, it was Lompoc's potential expansion into those areas. And you answered another question, is there a demand for the industrial zoning? Yes, I've lost three major projects that I could have built, proximity 700-plus jobs I could have brought to the community, but was unable to do because I couldn't get the industrial land to do it. Thank you.
Well, I'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck. Thank you for the public comment. I guess the, I've already stated what my concern is in regard to doing this before the general plan update. Nonetheless, we are where we are, and this is the process that we've taken. So that said, the struggle that I'm having is that I do believe we have a limited amount of industrial zoning, and I do believe we need to take advantage of the square footage that we do have. I think a good example that I know of personally is where Pally Winery and Loring Wine Company are in the building, off of Central Avenue and B Street. They were required to put in much more parking than will ever be utilized in that location. They were required to put in landscaping that will be seen by basically no one. I know that because I, you know, these are folks who I've worked with, and, you know, they have one vehicle each, there's two vehicles there, in the backside of that building 90% of the year. So in other words, that's prime real estate that could have been used, that will not be used because it was part of a business park zone. The reason it went in at a business park zone was because there wasn't enough acreage for them to build in another location. So I understand the struggle behind the need for, for additional industrial zoning space. That said, I am not sure we need to get rid of business park completely. So without, I, I think as a good city planning department would want, if, if your zoning is consistent with, with what is actually there, you're doing a darn good job. Now, a lot of times that doesn't happen, just for whatever reasons, it doesn't happen. But I would be interested in figuring out, you know, what, what do we have currently? What's the demand? What's the, you know, can we prove that there is that demand? And really go from there. Without having done the general plan update first, we're not going to have our vision in front of us, in my opinion. I mean, we can, we're gonna just try to agree on the details and, you know, work our way through the mud, essentially. So that's the struggle that I'm having. I'm not sure I really want to send it to the planning commission one way or the other. I think it's something that can be considered, but I'm not sure this is the, the correct solution to the problem. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protemp. I agree with Councilmember Costa, we should have the vision in front of us, and we don't. Because that's the general plan update that has not come up to us, because this overrode that process. I do want to make a comment regarding Pally Wine and the extra number of spots, parking spaces that they were required to do. That was then. The council did change that and adopted a new, it, it responded to the problem and it adopted a new, I believe ordinance regarding wine industry facilities where they don't need all the parking that they were, used to be required. So, and nevertheless, you know, the planning commission, the council was proactive in that issue, and they did something perhaps not to the best, perhaps is still not tuning, but that brings a good example. The council and the planning commission do react to these problems. They don't maybe get it quite right the first time, hopefully they get it the, the second time. But what it really points to add is that we need to revise them. We don't need to get rid of them. We don't need to just get rid of one zone because it doesn't work. I think we need to revise it and make it work. And we need to make, make the business park work, and we need to make the industrial zone work. You know, just to throw one away because it doesn't work, that, that's not correct. I mean, we, as one of the members of the public said, you know, we need to fix it, not get rid of it. We need to fix it. We attempted to fix the, the wine industry facilities, perhaps not to, to the, to the optimum, perhaps we need to go at it again, but we're attempting to do so. And I think that's why we need to continue to do with these two zones, is to continue to optimize such as that they are business-friendly, such as that they are occupied, but at the same time, they maintain the development standards that they were set out to have.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you. You know, I don't know about the rest of you, but I do have a vision, and my vision is consistent with our vision statement. And I don't know the vision statement by heart either, but I know in general, it talks about a community that is progressive, has standards, standards of living here. So this is going to be consistent. Now, getting rid of the fact that we're going to be getting rid of one of the zones in lieu of another, that's not the fact at all. We're making a zone that is consistent with a business park and industrial. We're, we're blending the two. We're not going to tell a person that wants to come and bring a business into a business park, an example, is I come to town, I say, you know, I've got this business, and where's your business park? And we're going to be able to say, well, you know, Mr. Businessman, all of these areas right here are applicable to your business. Pick a spot right there. They can go out and look at it, and if they see a, a smelting factory over there, they're not gonna want to bring their little thing over there, but they took another piece of, look over there, and they see a nice, quiet little area where there's a bakery, and the denmat, and maybe Asco or whatever, and they're gonna say, this is an area that I can, that I can build in, and I can bring my business. We're not eliminating a business park, and we're not eliminating an industrial zone. What we're doing is we're blending the two and making it applicable to both types of business. And to address the, the concern of the, the community member that had left for a while and came back and said that it looks like, I don't know the wordage, that...
Bomb.
Bomb hit it. Now, this is exactly what we're trying to address. We're trying to address it, and we're going, we're trying to make it that businesses can come to this community. And we're not gonna be turning away the businesses that could have brought 700 jobs. We're going to be saying, yes, we do have property for you. We're not gonna be turning away the, the high-tech company that would like to bring a computer company here to town. We're not gonna be turning them away either. We're going to make it, we're gonna make it a city that will welcome all businesses, and we have spaces for all these businesses. That's what my vision is, and that's why I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, this is not a bad plan, it's a, it's a pretty darn good plan. Now, maybe 10 years from now, when we have one of these zones that is filled up completely with high-tech companies, and we may want to look at it and say, you know, this is a business park, we may want to rezone it like that. But right now, look at what Lompoc is. I mean, we're not, again, I'm repeating myself, we're not Silicon Valley, and we're not an industrial section of Tijuana where there's nothing but a bunch of sweatshops and smoke factories coming up. We're a nice little community that we want, what we want is nice, clean businesses here. We will get those, but we have to be welcoming to all businesses. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck. I guess, I guess I'm just really struggling here because I understand the lack of industrial space that we have, and I want to try to, again, facilitate folks coming in and not inhibit them from coming in to our city. However, I honestly don't think that at this point I have enough information, I can give some general policy guideline, but really, it's that I want the, the planning commission to look at both options and give a recommendation based on their expertise, along with staff's expertise. I don't really know if there's anything else we can discuss at this point. It doesn't sound like we're gonna be able to build a consensus of three that says one way or the other. Thanks.
Councilmember Lingle.
I agree. We do need to send this back to the, in my opinion, back to the planning commission. We asked for some professional advice from our planning department, we've received it. Now they're asking us if we should send it back to the planning commission with their Now, they're asking us if we should send it back to the Planning Commission with their recommendations and the recommendations by the mayor, and let the Planning Commission come back to us with their recommendations. I agree 100% with Councilmember Costa. Let's get the Planning Commission to do what they were appointed to do. We've already asked our planning department to do what their professionals are doing. So let's put the two together, and maybe we can come back with a plan that is best for the city.
So what I'm hearing then, for a change, the council is going to make no recommendation to the Planning Commission? Okay.
I would like to make a motion, if the council is ready to accept a motion.
Yes.
I would like to move that the city council directs the staff to take the existing industrial zoning and the existing business park zoning, and analyzes them to optimize them. And I'd like to leave it at that.
Let me ask real quick. Do we want to vote on every policy question? Or do you want to...
I think, as Councilmember Costa said, we don't have enough information to even make any decisions here. And I think the expertise of the Planning Commission, with knowing parcels, knowing the details, also knowing the general plan update and the general vision of the general plan update, will be able to recommend the city council on how to move forward.
Councilmember Starbuck, I would request for you to edit the motion to include that they can consider creating an industrial success zone.
As one other option.
Correct.
To optimize, to look at the present industrial and business park, and look at it in fine detail, and if they decide to look at other options, like the option that is being proposed here, they can do so as well. Why not? With any other options that they might come up with.
Ms. Breeze, understanding that if that's the way that we go, is there any other questions you would have this evening for us?
No, thank you. That provides adequate direction.
Thank you. I'll second the motion.
All right. Discussion? Not now.
Oh, no. Council discussion.
Council discussion. Please, we're in the middle of a vote. All right. No discussion, we'll take the vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilmember Lingle.
Why? You've got that mayor's hat pretty well set on your head. Councilmember Martner, I'd like a little clarification. So, what you're asking is that we're sending this to the Planning Commission to consider making improvements to both the commercial and the...
Business park zoning and industrial zoning.
Yes, business and industrial zoning. And then, Councilmember Costa asked that, or recommend that we also include the portion that the Planning Commission can consider, the commercial success zone.
Industrial.
Industrial, yeah, industrial success zone. How is that different than number three on there, where we directed, direct staff to forward the proposed text amendment language to the Planning Commission for consideration and public hearing? If we added the point that also consider council recommendations and comments on that, would that be significantly different?
Yes, it would be, because number three is basically saying to adopt this recommendation, to look at it, and to basically, you know, look at the text amendment language. I am, my motion is beyond this. My motion is that the Planning Commission looks at the existing zoning and provides input in improving it, as well as considering this. So it's much more comprehensive.
Number three also says a proposed text amendment, which we are not giving any proposed text amendment at this time.
Right.
I'll probably, even though I do not completely disagree with either one of you, I probably will not be voting for this, just because I believe we're going to end up with the same zones we have right now. And history has indicated that they have not been successful. Now, hopefully, with your recommendation, if this does go to the Planning Commission, they will make some improvements that'll make them successful. But my gut feeling right now is that we're going to come back with the same zones we have right now that we have had for the past 15 years, and I'm really concerned about that.
Councilmember Lingle, I would encourage you to give the Planning Commission the benefit of the doubt. I believe that all commissioners in that commission do have the intent to improve and do anything possible in this city, such as that we do have the economic development that we have set as our priorities. So I give them the benefit of the doubt that they will make improvements. They will not just keep it as a status quo, and that's why I'm making the motion.
In addition, Councilmember Lingle, you know, I plan on talking to my Planning Commissioner because I would hate to see that occur as well. We need to make some improvements, so please talk to your commissioner, understanding it's going to come back to council, and if nothing has happened, and we're all dissatisfied, we can take action at that time as well. I just don't feel like I have enough information, and I think that I'm more comfortable with it beginning there than us providing such a strong recommendation at this point. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to make a statement here that I will vote for this because it shows an improvement over what we have existing. I don't want a 2-2 here. I do want this to continue to move. I don't want to shut it down. With that said, I'm going to seriously push later for opening industrial property over the business park. I mean, there is a need to have some small area for business park. Our history has shown that we don't demand the industrial park, or, I mean, the business park, like we have the need for the industrial area. And the lack of property that we have available for either one of them even enhances my urge to have the industrial zone expanded further than what it is allowed now. So, it's kind of a two-sided sword here for me, because I really would love to be able to combine these and make it work. But in order to move this forward, I'm willing to go ahead and put it to the Planning Commission, and I will talk to my commissioner about my intents with the industrial. I feel that it's very important that we at least open this area up for manufacturing, for job, over the business park that we hope will someday show up here. So, that being said, that we'll go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Starbuck, if I could, really quickly, my apologies. I just want to state for the record that I'm not necessarily opposed to what you're stating by any means. And I also want to make a request to the public. I think that now is the time for the folks who know about industrial zoning, are, you know, have issues with it, or foresee issues, or anybody, you know, invested, anybody who's a stakeholder in this particular issue, to please go to that Planning Commission meeting and have your opinion stated. I think that that's, I think we are missing that a little bit this evening. So, and I know it's a special meeting, and we've been meeting so often, but I'm really hoping that that takes place at that Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle.
I just want to say that I concur with what Councilmember Martner, or Councilmember Costa said, is that it's very important for the public to get involved in this. This is something that's going to, not necessarily make or break this city, but it's going to be very important for the next 10, 15 years on how we proceed. So, if you have a stake in it, even if you have an opinion, please show up at the Planning Commission meetings, show up at the next city council meetings, let us know your feel. I appreciate all the public comment we got tonight, but there's a pretty sparse group here. So, you know, there's, I'm sure there's hundreds of people out there that have an opinion, and I think it's important that they all be heard. Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote. All right. Ms. Breeze, I'm going to go right back through policy questions. Does the city council want the staff to continue working on the definitions for the zone? Are we okay there?
Yes, we will proceed.
Okay. Does the city council want to provide general guidance to the applicant? Are we okay with the policy question here?
Yes, that would be Planning Commission level.
Okay, and then, obviously, we didn't delete that, so you've received everything you need for the Planning Commission?
Yes, thank you, sir, we did.
Could you ask the mayor to come in, Mr. somebody? Pardon? He's ignoring me like he typically does.
Truth be known, I sat on the black couch, and it's hard to get up. Okay.